Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, October 27th, 2022 work session of the Shenandoah County School Board's to order at 5:00 p.m. Do I have a motion for my colleagues? Thank you, Cheryl. To approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Mr. Barlow. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keller. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's approved by 6-0 vote. Going on information, Ms. Shepherd, about the legislative position amendments.
Yes, so this evening, the school board members will discuss the V S B A legislative position amendments and decide whether Shenandoah County School Board supports the block or wants to propose a change to one or more of the items to be considered, and the school members all should have a copy of the proposed legislative position amendment in front of them. Or...
Okay, who would like to start discussing? Brandy?
Um, you know, I didn't realize that we were gonna have to do this in a block. There are several of these that I'm struggling with, and forgive me, I don't have my notes in front of me. I don't know if it's worth asking them to, to, um, thank you, I don't know if it's worth asking them to, you know, take ones out that I struggle with. I would think that probably the best way to go about it is, for me, is just to say no to all of them, come back and then take a local stand after we've looked at them individually. The school buses, the raising the debt amount for construction from 80 million to 200 million. There is nothing in these that I see right now that, and I know that the V S B A has, some of these are new, some of these are stuff that they already have taken a stand on and they're just changing verbiage, but there's nothing here that I can see that would affect the student outcomes, which is where we should be with things. Not only that, but like our voting on a local level, Fairfax County, all the bigger counties seem to control how legislation rolls. So I'm of the mindset that we ought to just go with the solid no on all of them and then take a deeper look at it and decide whether there's something that we want to change or do whatever, and send the V S B A their...
Okay.
Their affirmations.
You want to go next? Dennis?
Well, I don't want to take a lot of time, but since three of us are brand new on this whole procedure, I'd like to, and if somebody could now, you know, be the alternate DA here, I am, in reading through the handbook and talking to our, I'm sorry, and talking to our lobbyist, Mr. Kessler, I have to admit to a lot of concern about this process and how it's done. There's a lot of valley who about the fact that we constitute the legislature of the V S B A, but then when you look at the process by which these policy, excuse me, these legislative positions come to us, it's pretty arcane. They, committee, one of the committees, the physicians committee starts working on this stuff in May, or excuse me, March, I believe, and they come up with a bunch of positions, and then they meet during the summer and the late summer. So they spend six months taking a look at these, and then at some point, it goes to the Board of Directors for review, and then it comes to us. And I believe we got our slug of these things on the 23rd of September, which means we only had one meeting in which we could have dealt with this, and that would have been the October meeting. And indeed, at that point, Cindy made us aware that we had those, and what we were to do was to let her know how we felt about them individually. And it was that, I don't know if I'm getting feedback here, but if somebody can tell me if I'm either on or off, okay. So that's why we requested the time here to talk about these, but now finding out that they're gonna be voted in a block, a lot of these things are very divergent. And not only that, as I read through these, these are not crystal clear as to what their intent is. There's a lot of muddiness in each and every one of these, and I'd like to use as an example number five, I believe it is. Yeah, legislative position number five. School facility construction funds and financing. Well, let's start off talking about the desire here of trailers. Okay, that sounds okay. Then it gets into, you know, trying to make these schools look like, and it actually says it there, kind of look like the schools in the wealthiest districts in the state. Okay, I'm not sure we want to do that, but I can understand the idea of taking schools that are at need of improvement, but is, you know, so we're now positing that a school in southwest Virginia is gonna have to come up to the criteria that, let's say Fairfax has. By the way, all of these proposals did come from Fairfax this year. So that kind of indicates to me that, now Fairfax has a billion-dollar budget. I say again, a billion-dollar budget. And so they have us to go through this and come up with their rationale, and we're stuck with trying to figure it out in 45 days where we even have one meeting. So trying to come get my head around the concept of whether we want schools that are gonna try to improve their space to look like Fairfax County, I'm not sure that's the state we want to use. And then it gets into the manner in which inequalities are addressed, and figuring out what lesser-served areas are. And I'm saying, okay, who's gonna figure that out? You know, who decides what the lesser-served areas are and who they are? And then kind of wind up with the conclusion being that this is a funding advocacy to highlight the long-term benefits and cost savings of energy-efficient construction. So there's a lot of stuff in here, and as I read through, I see that once it's passed, it goes back to the executive committee for its interpretation of what these are. So if we're the legislature, you know, we have like a yes or no, yes or no, up or down vote for these 12 issues, and at that point, it goes right back to the executive committee decides how it is they're gonna perceive them. And I could think of 100 ways in which somebody could perceive this legislative position number five that wouldn't make me happy. Maybe some would make me happy, I don't know. But I see that kind of, and I talked to Mr. Kessler about this, I see this kind of, these generalities in these long things. I mean, you could drive a truck through some of the rationale for these tall positions. So I'm not enamored with the time we got, of the ability that we had to kind of figure this out, ask questions about it, and then this concept of voting in the block, you know, at least you'd think we could vote issue by issue. But what we have to do is, if we don't like something, we have to let them know in the next several days, we don't like it, and tell them why. That's an interesting exercise in democracy. Usually, you put something on the table and you discuss it, you don't have to go back to your hierarchy and say, hey, I've been looking at this, and I don't like this, and I would like you to consider whether we should vote on it or not. And that's the position we're in. If we actually disaggregate anything from this group, it goes back to the, is it by the 4th or the 1st, we have to send?
The 4th.
The 4th. So by the 4th of November, we have to send the things that we're not happy with, or at least any of us, I mean, excuse me, of the jardins. It would have to be stripped out, and we have to give a rationale as to why. And if that wasn't accepted, then too bad for us. If it is, then it gets voted on separately, and I think we'd have as much a chance of winning that in 132-division vote as we would winning Powerball. So, you know, I don't feel like I'm really part of the legislature. I feel like I'm part of a rubber stamp that's kind of kowtowing, you know, not only to maybe, you know, the richest of the counties, but also, sorry, I'm gonna say it, an organization that has pretty much been locked up a lot of social engineering concepts in the last five or seven years that have landed us in kind of a trick situation here. I'll shut up in a minute. But I went through and looked at the number of lobbying positions that the V S B A has endorsed, and it's double-sided, and I stopped counting at 200. And we have 12 more on the table today. And these positions are in effect until they're either implemented or taken off the table. It looks like they don't very often come off the table. So I think we've got a behemoth here that, and we, as school board members, trying to decide these kind of things with, you know, in one meeting's time and get to a final, it's pretty unrealistic, and it smacks of some sort of, you know, institutional hubris here that kind of expects us to do it, to do a slam dunk on a block of these things, which are so divergent. So I, as I say, I have two specific concerns. Well, I don't have concerns about all of them, but I'm in the mindset, to agree with Brandy, that even though it would just be a protest vote, I'd just like to vote no on the group, and say we don't like this process, we'd like to see V S B A become a little bit more tuned towards members and its input, and send it on. We're gonna lose, but the way it's big cake, we're gonna lose anyway. So...
Right, at least we wouldn't, if we come back and do something locally, then we aren't included in any information that goes to our, goes to the legislation as far as supporting these positions. So electric buses, if we voted in a block, we're against it, 130 vote for it. If we don't take a local stance on it, then we get included as, as okay with whatever this is. So it's important to come back and to make sure that we take a local stance and send that off to them.
Good. Cal?
Can I just clarify what we're voting on, or what this is? These aren't laws, these are not policies, these are positions that the V S B A has already had. So if you look at 1.2, they've already had this position, well, it's one on here, but then it says 1.2. The V S B A has already had the position, and the only amendments are the things that are underlined or stricken through. So this isn't new stuff, it's just changes to stuff that they have already had as a position. But that's all it is. And all the legislative position process does is says to our advocates, to our issue advocates, sure, it's okay to talk to the legislature legislators about this. You don't have to come back to us every time and say, hey, is it okay if I talk to them about electric buses? I know in the past, we've talked about regular buses. So all of this is saying is, yep, when you're talking there, down there, when you're lobbying on behalf of the organization, you can talk about electric buses. That's all it's saying. It's not binding, it's not, like I said, it's not policy, we're not adopting a policy, we're not putting anything in writing that we have to have. We're just, the delegate assembly is just voting on whether or not we like the amendments to the policies we already have, or the positions we already have with the V S B A. And I get your point, if you guys want to take some local stand on these positions, I think that's totally fine, but to say that the process just started is not true. It started in the spring, the V S B A asked for input from the membership, and then it goes to their positions committee in the summer. And a lot of times, the reason that everything seems like it's rush, rush, rush after May and into the summer, is because they have to wait until the general assembly's done and the laws are actually completed. So they know what they want to advocate to change, or oh, they didn't get that quite right, let's try to tweak it. They can't do that until they have what was just done in the previous assembly. So it's not... V S B A asks for input in the spring, the committee meets in the summer, then the V S B A board meets in the summer. Both of those have Valley/Region membership on them. Has anybody reached out to the Valley, our Valley/Region person? No, probably not. To talk, you know, why did they? Did they like it? Did they vote against it in committee? You know, that kind of stuff could have been done. And I know for new board members, this is new, but following the process all the way through from March would have been helpful. And Dennis, to your point that if we're the legislator body and we're just getting it, that's sort of the way legislative bodies work. Somebody proposes something, it goes to a committee, the committee votes on it, the committee releases it to the House or the Senate, or whatever the governing body is, and whoever's the governing body decides whether or not it's coming to the floor for a vote, and then it comes to the floor for a vote. So that's basically the exact same process the V S B A is using here. It's a legislative process. Although these are just positions, they're not binding. If you have issues with specific ones, that's totally fine. One other thing I will say is, the reason that they want us to give them to them is because there may be five school divisions who have the same concern we do. So rather than giving five people time, they'll let those five divisions talk to each other, they'll talk to JT, they'll consolidate, they'll decide who's the best spokesperson, and then that way, that way, it's, you know, the delegate assembly is only going three or four hours and not 10 or 12. So that's the only reason they wanted it advanced. It's for the process and making the process run smoothly the day of the assembly. Now, Cindy, you would know, have we ever taken a local stance in, against any of these ever? Not, not, not anything that's been written in this policy or anything like that. No, we have voted against some of them in the past. We haven't asked for them to be removed from the block, but I was not the delegate, I can't remember who was, but I remember it was either Harrisonburg or Rockingham had an issue with one of them and had it removed, and we agreed with them. So we voted with them when it was separated out. I don't remember.
The other question, the other thing about legislative process, when things go to the House floor, it may pass a motion, however, those folks that voted against it will be noted. This doesn't work that way.
Unless you ask them to. And that's a new thing. But it's just like this board, you know, if we vote on something and it passes, that's the position of the board, and if somebody was on the losing side of that vote, they have to accept that it was a position of the board, but they can still say, you know, to Todd or to whoever, I didn't vote for it, and this is why. And we can do that. We can do that for any of these, say, you know, the V S B A passed these things, we disagreed for these reasons, and just talk to your legislators. There's plenty of opportunities, and there will be on whatever that name is.
Right. Like, your constituents can come in, they can go back and they can look at those things, and they can say, well, Cindy stood her ground and she didn't vote against it. The motion passed, but Cindy didn't agree with it, so she technically, you know, was okay. What happens here is, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we lose this, that's not, it doesn't get voted down, the Shenandoah County voted against it, it goes in that everybody, the board, it's just a motion that's passed in 130-some or whatever this agreed with it. So we're essentially, with some of this, is, you know, even if we disagree, signing on that we, and that's one of the biggest parts I have a problem with, is, well, if you lose, because all of us are here, that, I mean, you lose, and nobody can go back and say, well, where did Shenandoah County stand with it? Where did Rockingham stand with it? I mean, because some people may not even look at this. I mean, I have a feeling that, you know, there is enough thought process, and the V S B A is just some wonderful organization that is advocating for everything, and, you know, this is a lot of money grubbing, in my opinion. It's gonna come back to taxpayers, and, you know...
So we can take a local position, but after this, we are not gonna change the process now.
Oh, no, no, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, but I...
We're too late in the season to change the process now, and...
Right.
Dennis, my suggestion to you would be for the next year, to early on in the spring, saying, this process stinks, and I think we need to look at it, and, you know, a lot of times, they'll have a special committee that looks at it. So, I mean, I think that's, I think that's the way to do it. You guys can tell me if there's specific ones on here that you disagree with, that if you want me to pull it out, or if somebody pulls it out, you want me to vote no, if we have consensus to do that, I'll do it. But I just want you to know that we are not, it's not a law, it's not policy. We're just saying, okay, lobbyists, you're allowed to talk to legislators about this.
Right, but we have, what, $10,000 a year? Is that our fees for this, for the V S B A? I mean...
So it's a little under $25,000, but some of it's for board docs, some of it's for our policies. So about $10,000 is for the professional development that they put on and...
I mean, we use them for a lot of different things, but, you know, they are fairly powerful. They are in every school district in the state of Virginia, and they take a lot of money, you know, to lobby for positions. Shenandoah County should at least have a voice, whether it's here, it may not make a bit difference there, but, you know, is taxpayer funded, that we should at least do diligence and look at them, and at least in the local, and I agree, we can't change how it's done, but we can at least sit down and go, yeah, you know, you all could talk about electric school buses, but we, here in the county, aren't bothered about it.
So on the school bus one, which one is that? Is that number four? Or... Okay, so legislative position number four. The only thing that's changing from the position that's already on is what is underlying there. The V S B A supports state assistance and facilitation for school divisions moving their fleet from diesel-powered buses to electric buses. All it's saying is, we support state assistance if that's the way we go, or if that's the way we go in the future. And it's not saying we have to go that way.
I, right.
And if that's an issue, you tell me why, you tell me what you want me to say, and I'll say it. But it's not the whole position that we're talking about, just that line.
Cindy, I have several responses to your comments. One is that these are indeed positions.
Yes, they are.
Okay. It's not an informational factor. This is a position that the lobbyist is asking the legislature to take. Now, there is a lot of givenness, and that's one of my problems, but there's a lot of sponginess here, and it's not gonna come back to us as an individual school board, or even the so-called legislature. It's gonna go to the executive board, and V S B A can figure out what it is, what part of that they're gonna push. So we've lost control.
I don't believe that's the case.
It's in the report, that's where it goes. Now, you said earlier, you know, I guess, you know, we should be more tuned to what's happening. Okay, but I really don't remember. Now, we get a lot of stuff. I mean, how many emails we get a day? We get a lot, we get a lot from the V S B A. I don't remember somebody calling out, they very well likely probably did, but it was one of those, it just goes down there. This is an organization, a lot of money, that we, our taxpayers, support. And this is an organization that's advocating for these. I think they should be a little bit more aggressive about coming to us and saying, here's what we're looking at, and send that to us, in some sort of way that we can actually see it ahead of time, you know, rather than saying, we're throwing this to you in March, and then they discuss it until September, and then they tell us what they... It just seems like it's very unresponsive to us. And it bothers me that we're actually paying large amounts of money for an organization that's very well-heeled, and what we're getting out of it is just loads of, I'm gonna go back to Brandy's point, after what we've read about this, that name scores and so forth the last several days, very little of this seems to be predicated on student outcome, achievement, performance. It seems to be predicated on a lot of things that cost money that they're going to the legislature for, and I'm not sure if we or anybody has paid much attention here, what that's doing to improve scores or academic performance. But I feel that we're kind of being used as kind of the veil, if you will, for democracy here, to make it sound like we have a voice in this thing. We don't.
Okay, and why don't we move on? We don't like the process, and you have made your points. All I'm saying is, we're not adopting policy, we're not codifying anything. Why don't we talk about the specific ones that you have a problem with, so we can either send something to JT or not? Or, I mean, is there consensus for me to vote down the whole block? Cal?
I'd be okay with that.
I'm not okay with that. I think it's irresponsible.
I think, I think it's the only thing we've ever voiced heard.
I mean, if they're really, if this isn't really, you know, kind of, you know, it doesn't really, we're not taking a position, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, I mean, how is that irresponsible?
Because we are members of this, whether you like it or not, we're members of the V S B A, we have a voting delegate. I don't have a problem with these amendments to the positions as they are. That is all we are talking about at the V S B A convention this time, just the amendments that are here. We're not talking about the process, we're not talking about the positions as they are already in place, we are only talking about the amendments. I have no problem with the amendments to the positions. That's what I'm trying to find out. Is there consensus from the board that we have problems with the amendments? Is there consensus from the board that we have problems with the amendments to these positions?
I have problems with the amendments. I like Dennis. And maybe, again, which goes back to the past where, like I said, everybody thinks the V.S.B.A. is wonderful and doesn't question anything. Amendment, legislation, position three. It says, the bottom line, position change recommends that makes V.S.B.A. advocacy for resources to address cybersecurity as more general and increase the serious cybersecurity threats and makes it a critical need for school divisions. However, if you read the 15 lines there, it's only the very last line that talks about cybersecurity. "The state should fund the implementation of extensive data collection, cleansing, warehousing, tracking, and recording requirements placed on the State Department of Education and all local school divisions by state and federal assessment and accountability mandates." So, what you're coming to me and saying is, is because we've already done this and because nobody looked at it and nobody had a problem with it, we should only look at this underlining. Now, this position, this board should only look at the underlining spot because it's already a done deal. I'm saying, I'm looking at all of it. I don't like this part of it. I don't like the whole thing. I have no, I can't imagine that extensive data collection, cleansing, warehousing, and tracking is anything that any citizen would want done on their children or anything else. But this is a position that they've taken, whether it was three years ago or this year. So, you know, I, you know, I think, like I said, you know, we're going to lose this battle anyway because it is what it is, but I would like to take a regular. I'm okay with voting no on all of it.
Can you express yours?
Yeah, everything's been covered.
To be honest with you, I don't have a whole lot of feeling one way or the other. I went into looking at this thing and it was going to propose that we move towards electric buses. I don't read that in yet. I think what needs to be done, regardless of how this voted, the vote's been, other than making it a stance or something. I think that we need to come up with a list to hear the things that we don't like, that we would like to have changed. And I don't know where it goes from here, but somebody at a higher level then looks at that and say, "Okay, this is what Shenandoah County said."
You know, the thing is, is we're being used to some extent to help Fairfax County. When it comes to the legislative process, we're being used as, that we all agree that, you know, these are great options, and they are very broad. Like I said, you know, if Fairfax County wants to talk to their legislators about buses and getting funding for that, they can do the same thing that you just told us to do, talk to their legislator. I don't have to sign on for that.
Can I explain to you why it says Fairfax County? So, just as I said, if there's five of us who have a change, who want to make an amendment, it goes to J.T. so he can sort of consolidate it, make sure everybody's good with it, and then one person presents it. That's basically what has happened here, is it could have been 10 different jurisdictions that proposed the change, but Fairfax County actually has a full-time lawyer on staff, so they have the time. So, I have no doubt other divisions spoke with them about this. And it just says Fairfax County because that's the person who's willing to speak to it on the floor. It doesn't mean other divisions didn't have the same thought. It's just that Fairfax has agreed to speak to it on the floor.
Right.
That's why.
Well, like I said, what it comes down to for me is that we've got schools with bigger money, bigger lawyers, bigger whatever, running legislation through Richmond. And we're signing on to it arbitrarily, unbeknownst thing, whatever. So, you know, and maybe it means absolutely nothing, but we should at least go down on paper saying, "We didn't agree with this. We don't agree with the broadness. We don't, I mean, this isn't something that we should do." So...
I guess the only other thing, and I meant to say this early on, is so usually when people object to lobbying, they're objecting because lobbyists buy in for us. And those are access lobbyists. They buy their way. They give money to candidates. But then there's issue lobbyists or issue advocates, and that's what the V.S.B.A. is. The V.S.B.A. does not have a PAC. The V.S.B.A. does not make contributions to candidates. And it's just, it's like the Farm Bureau or like the ophthalmologists or, you know, it's a trade organization. And what it is, is people pool a small amount of money to get a big benefit. And so, when we're talking about the V.S.B.A. in general, I just wanted to point out that it is, it's a trade association. It's an education trade association, just like the Farm Bureau is an agriculture trade association. There's nothing, I honestly don't understand why we don't want people doing issue advocacy for us.
I think the answer is pretty easy, and that is, we have no idea what they're going to push. Because once we vote on this, no matter how we vote, it goes into the 132 bucket and we're part of it. And so, whether we like it or not, we're there, so we don't have much input. And my point is that this kind of exercise of having a group of 12, that we have to disaggregate one by one and then go through and find things that we want to discuss, you know, Mother May I can actually discuss and talk about this. And it's going to be a fiction because when 125 divisions vote for it, it's done anyway from the one. And number two, for interpretation of these things, it's going to go back to the executive committee to decide what they're going to push. And I bet a nickel they're not going to wish what we want in Shenandoah County. But I don't know that. But I don't want to leave it up to chance. Now, I think we should have something a little different to Andrew's point. I think it's probably a good exercise to actually go through here and talk about some of these. The problem is, it's going to take quite a while because for each one of these legislative positions, they give various kinds of rationale. So, am I opposed to getting rid of trailers? Or am I opposed to them, just somebody deciding what a disadvantage area it is that's going to look more like Fairfax? Or am I particularly concerned about the extra $120 million it's going to cost? I mean, there's a lot of things in each one of these that I can pull out here. But then, once we get rid of it, it's up to, it's a subjective concept that the executive board has. I'd like to lay down a little...
Let me ask this before we go much further into the woods here. What would happen if we voted if it's 3-3?
I don't know. If it's 3-3 on whether we should vote for it as a block? I don't know. If it's 3-3 on the individual positions? If it's 3-3 on position number four?
Well, we're not doing it. We're voting as a block, on a block of information.
We are.
And here's my thing. I don't have a problem with this. I think Dennis does, and I want Dennis's voice to be heard. Okay, I think Brandy does, Kyle does, Marty maybe. You know, I want those voices to be heard, okay? And if that's the way they get heard, then I'm okay with that process too. But, you know, on a whole, I just, I don't see a whole lot of merit either way because I think they're going to do what they need to do or what they think they need to do.
Well, I will say that there have been times when a division has proposed an amendment to an amendment that got pulled out and it has passed on the floor there. So, it has actually been constructive. That example that I gave of Rockingham or Harrisonburg, whichever one it was, basically they disagreed with one of the amendments for a very specific reason. So, they asked that it be pulled out and voted separately. When they made their change, it was then passed, so they got what they wanted. So, there is actually value in participating in the process. And, you know, if we have a problem with number four and there's eight other divisions that have a problem with number four, they figure out which one of us is going to be the spokesperson to talk about number four. And if we get our change made, then we are winners in the process. So, there is value to it, in my view. But honestly, I'm ready to move on. You guys just tell me what you want to do.
One more thing about the winner in that process. So, somebody goes to the trouble of saying, "Number seven could be a problem. We give a rationale, it goes in 3, 4, 2, I don't know. Some other divisions also say they have a problem with it." It's put up during a virtual vote on November the 10th and somebody's given two minutes to speak to. There you go. Okay, so again, chances of winning the lottery be greater. So, does it happen every once in a, I guess so, depending on who gets behind it. But, you know, there's, as I said, there's 240 of these blibits out there are just cooking, ready for somebody else to take them, some lobbyist to take them to the legislature. But we don't know when they're doing that or what they're advocating. We're in the dark.
We know what they're advocating because we have the...
No, we don't. This is as general as it could possibly be.
All right, we need to move on. We've got time on it. All right, it looks like, can you pull out one or two that you want sent into a vote? And she can go with, and the rationale by opposing it?
I like it.
Dennis?
Doesn't work for me, no.
I mean, we don't have a motion on the floor to decide what we, if we're going to vote for a block, it looks like, you know, if that's the motion to vote as this, as a block, then we have to put it to a vote and it looks like it would be a 3-3 for a no. Then we don't vote for a block, is what it looks like.
Then maybe we abstain at the convention. I think that would be the most fair thing to do. If we can't agree on whether or not to vote for or against the block, if it's split, then I say we abstain.
I would agree with that. And I would also add that I think that in doing that, we need to come up with a list to hear our problems with that.
I won't be able to say that then, but we can send it to the board.
Is that consensus? We don't make a motion on it, do we?
No, it's not actually.
It's just consensus. I mean, I think we should vote for it, but clearly that's not the majority. So, if you want me to abstain, I'll abstain.
Let's see, Cindy, you've been on, let's see, this is our third year. And compared to previous years, have there been more amendments this year than in previous years?
No, this is a lot less.
Lot less?
Yes. And, you know, when I mentioned that, the one that I remember from Harrisonburg or Rockingham, there are usually a dozen or so each year at the delegate assembly that actually do come to the floor. That was just one that I could remember.
Do I close, Helen?
Take a recess for, until, let's say, 6:10, 6:15? And then the board supervisors is going to have to call their meeting to order and...
Okay, so we're going to adjourn until...
No, no, not adjourn.
No, we're not going to adjourn. Okay.
Take a recess.
We're going to recess until 6:10. And thank you for your attention.
What's the turnaround time from the time you start the testing until you get results back?
So sometimes it's immediate, like within the next day or week. It depends on if the test has been equated or not. Yeah. So, but a lot of times it's immediate.
And it's on forms that the kids fill out themselves?
So no, this is all computer-based testing.
Oh, whatever. It's an online form that the kids fill out themselves?
It's an online test, yes. So if you look, this is our English.
It's a heck of an eye chart.
Scores. I wish it was a little bigger. I'll highlight a few things. The pass score is 75. So anything that is 75 or above is green. Anything that's less than 75 is yellow. So you can look at Peter Mieleberg in Central Non-Middle School and say, okay, they didn't quite get there, but they're almost, they're almost there. And then achievement gaps is your groups right here. Your student groups that, you know, how did they do? So, this evening, we are going to talk about four things, and some of this will be a repeat for our school board members, but some of it will be new for our board of supervisors. We're going to talk about accreditation and an instruction update. We're going to talk about a facilities update. We're going to talk about Southern campus grade reconfiguration and then additional classes at triplet tech. So, we received our accreditation status early September for the 2021-2022 school year. And those results from the 2021-2022 school year are combined with the 18-19 and the 17-18 to determine accreditation for the 22-23 school year. There is one of the indicators that will not be evaluated this year, but will go into effect next year, and that's the college and career readiness indicator. And you'll see a little more about this in a future slide. And then the accreditation status for this year also includes our grade three through eight growth assessment, which are used to help determine students' growth. And those are new since the pandemic. The grade through three through eight reading and math growth assessment was something that the General Assembly, House Bill 2027 and Senate Bill 1357, approved last year. And it's to provide multiple assessments and measures to show student growth that align with the standards of learning. It's intended to assist students in unfinished learning from the 2021-2022 school year, where we were in the middle of the pandemic. It's basically grade level content, and it only does grades three through grade eight. And the eighth grade assessment does not include information above the current grade level, so it will not test ninth grade content. And then it's not a traditional pass fail like on the SOL. So, you know, on an SOL, if you made a 400, you had a pass, or a 500, you had an advanced pass. These scores are much higher than that, and they correlate, the state correlates them and then sends us that information. And we're doing three group assessments this year. So, we did one in the fall, so the first, you know, August, first part of September. We are going to administer another one here in December, January timeframe. And then we'll do the SOL test in May to complete our growth assessments for the year.
Ms. Shepherd, this is as required by the General Assembly, right?
Yeah, so this is our requirements for accreditation, the standards of accreditation from the Virginia Department of Education, which is part of the General Assembly work, yes.
But I mean, is some of that language in the House, Bill, and Senate Bill itself?
Some of it, yes. Not all of it. So, in a minute, you're going to see our actual accreditation scores, but I wanted to kind of highlight what you're going to see. So, Level One means that we meet or exceed expectations. And along the way, we look at performance, we, and then we monitor performance of the indicators as we move throughout the year. Level Two is near standards, we're almost there, but we're not quite. And again, you know, we're just below state standard or indicator, but approaching. And then we do a multi-level, multi-year improvement plan, and we revise that plan to accommodate those things that we didn't meet on. And then red is Level Three, and that means we're below standard. And that's where we have to implement a state-approved corrective action plan following an academic review by the Virginia Department of Education. So, here's our performance. And we, this slide has it compared to the state. If you'll notice, there's 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022. And if you look at the scores, you will notice that we are closing the gap between the state scores and Shenandoah County public school scores. So, if you look at the very first one, that's reading, and we're 73 is the state score, the state average, and 66 is Shenandoah County's average. If you look at math, the state average is 66, and Shenandoah County is 66. We fell down a little bit on writing there at the end. And that is one of our big focus areas for this year.
What's the turnaround time from the time you start the testing until you get your results back?
So, sometimes it's immediate, like within the next day or week. It depends on if the test has been equated or not, yeah. So, but a lot of times, it's immediate.
And it's on forms that the kids fill out themselves?
So, no, this is all computer-based testing.
Oh, but whatever, it's an online form that the kids fill out themselves?
It's an online test, yes. So, if you look, this is our English.
It's a heck of an eye chart.
Scores. I wish it was a little bigger. I'll highlight a few things. The pass score is 75. So, anything that is 75 or above is green. Anything that's less than 75 is yellow. So, you can look at Peter Mullenberg and Signal Knob Middle School and say, okay, they didn't quite get there, but they're almost, they're almost there. And then achievement gaps is your groups right here, your student groups that, you know, how did they do? And if you'll look at Sandy Hook, we have a little work that we need to do, Signal Knob and Peter Mullenberg, and then Mountain View High School. Math, I think we knocked it out of the park in math. If you look at the scores, the average is, I think it's a three-year average, is 70. We're at Level One at all of our schools in math, and then we're at Level One in our achievement gaps in math as well. So, Shenandoah County has had a history of doing well in math, and we did well in math last year as well. And I know you can't see the colors in the, but this is gold, which means, you know, students with disabilities, we need to do a little work there. So, if it's a gold color in the individual numbers there, then that means we need to do a little work. If it's red, then we're below average there. Okay, so this is a very colorful slide. We have this, the very top is history and social sciences. We did all right in history and social sciences. Remember during the pandemic, history and social sciences was one of the areas that we didn't teach as much because we focused on reading and math. So, this is one of the areas that, you know, we've increased our focus this year, and we'll continue to monitor that. And we've put things, some things in place in order to make that better. Science across the board is a focus area for us. And then right below that is chronic absenteeism. So, chronic absenteeism is when a student misses more than 18 days of school year, and we have to have 15% or less of our students missing 18 days or less of school. So, chronic absenteeism, we were asking kids last year to stay home because they had COVID or because they had symptoms of COVID. We're not asking kids to stay home now. We're telling them, come to school unless you have a fever of 100. Is that right? Yes. Yeah. So, we were working on chronic absenteeism as well. The college career and civic readiness, that's the one that's not being counted last year for accreditation. And Mountain View and Stralsburg High School both met the goal for that, and it's 85%. And Central High School is close. If you look below that, you'll see the accreditation status, and all of our schools are accredited. Peter Mullenberg is accredited with conditions.
Melody, can I ask why Peter Mullenberg is accredited with conditions and not Signal Knob? Looks like to me, based on that chart, they're the same? Okay.
So, three-year average, too, comes into play there.
Okay.
And then you will see the schools that we are monitoring. So, Sandy Hook is in science. North Fork Middle School is in science as well. Peter Mullenberg and Signal Knob are both science and English. So, in the next slide or two, you'll see what we're doing to improve those. So, we have some work to do. However, there is a celebration. In 2022, our pass rate was 62.73%, but we ranked 85th in the state. So, we rose 12 places from 97. So, we went from the bottom quarter to the third quarter. Our goal for this year is to move to the second quarter. So, we want to, you know, we want to decrease, we want to increase our rank to, you know, in the 50s or less, and we want to increase our pass rate as well. But, you know, that's a celebration because this is comparing apples to apples across the state of Virginia, to all of the school divisions. And where we improved 12 places, there were school divisions that went down 12 or 18 places. Chad, do you have something you can add to this? I know when you presented to the board, you said in our area, we were the only school division to...
To make growth.
To make growth. Yeah, to grow. So, our teachers are doing the right thing.
The only school division to increase its ranking?
Show growth, yes.
I mean, because...
Based on performance.
Because it seems to be that most school divisions, their pass rate would have increased.
No, not necessarily.
We went from 48, 49% up to 63%. And so, almost every school division between 21 and 22 must have gone up some.
Some of them went down due to the pandemic, yes.
But I thought the pandemic's main effect was in 21, and then we made huge progress in our pass rate this past year.
So, last year, there was a lot of recovery happening, trying to find out where students needed some spiraling or some additional help with some concepts and some foundational learning. And there was a lot of reteaching and moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think our numbers from 21 to 22 are pretty amazing, it seems to me.
Thanks, Brad, they are amazing. And so, what I always want to say is that our teachers are doing an amazing job recovering from the pandemic, and, you know, and we're just continuing to do amazing things with our students in the classroom. And hopefully, our accreditation status next year will show that even more.
And you arrived when?
July 1st, 2021. So, here's what we're doing. We have targeted supports. We did summer school, we did after, we're doing after-school tutoring. We are spiraling in math and science, which means that, you know, we're teaching this, but then if a student doesn't have a concept, then we're going downhill in that concept and then spiraling back up so that the kid understands what they missed and is able to move forward. We're looking at our data and making decisions based on our data. We are, in June of this year, we finished school, I think it was May the 24th, and on June the 1st, we did a data disaggregation. All of our principals came together with their leadership teams, and we met in the county government office, and we did a comprehensive needs assessment. What are we doing well, what are we not doing so well? What are our kids need help with, what do they not need help with? And then we took that information and did a continuous school improvement plan. So, in, for example, in math, we, or science, we're actually going back and looking at the standards of learning and making sure we're teaching science at the rigor in which it was intended to be taught. So, we're looking at those verbs, and if it says analyze, we're actually analyzing instead of just defining. So, we're doing a lot of work around our curriculum.
And the fact is that all these tools have theoretically been available for many years, correct? All these tools. Okay, but we've just been implementing them by and large for the last year or so?
Well, I think we did a comprehensive, I think we did a continuous school improvement plan for many years. I know when Ms. Proctor was at WW Robinson, they did a continuous school improvement plan. They were in school improvement at the time, and during her tenure there, then they came out of school improvement. Is that right? So, we've been doing them. It's just, you know, sometimes we lose our way and we have to find it again.
I mean, that's a pretty rigorous set of new things you're doing. You're not getting much pushback or much complaints from your staff?
No. And then the other thing that we did is we adjusted our master schedules. So, at middle school, we moved from a 45 or 50-minute block to a 90-minute block. And we extended our planning time. Ms. Proctor and Mr. Henzley did a nice job helping our elementary principals with their schedules so they can find more extended planning time for their elementary book. We adjusted course pacing, we implemented some professional development. Our principals are in collaborative planning meetings with our teachers and our school board office staff. And then we have reading specialists, interventionists, IT RCs, instructional coaches. They're all helping with this work.
And very little of this was mandated from above, right, from the state or the feds? These are just tools that are taken out of your toolbox?
Well, so, in the spring, we knew we needed, we knew we had some work that we needed to do. So, and we didn't want the summer to get away from us. So, you know, our leadership team at the school board office planned these meetings and these opportunities and, you know, went through the tools that we had in our toolbox and said, okay, these are the things that are going, that are going to make the most difference, and let's implement these things that are going to make the most difference. So...
But to answer my question, my question is, most of them were not mandated by the state or the feds?
So, when we started, when we started this in June, no. But since, since this, right here, specifically here, we do have to do a continuous school improvement plan.
Ah, okay. So, that's the, the red is the only real hammer that's out there?
Maybe the yellow, too. Yeah.
Oh, well, it's one yellow. I don't understand. But again, this came out after you started, we were going to do anything, right?
Yes, we had planned it all along, yes. We did a lot of data disaggregation last year, and we met with our principals every quarter to go over their data. And it was very helpful because then we knew where we needed to go over the summer so that we can hit the ground running in August when our students came back.
So, Brad, I'd like to speak to that because it was very interesting when the new Secretary of Education, Amy Cordero, took over. She made a big point about being data-driven, and she mentioned some of the initiatives that Superintendent's already mentioned. And to Melody's credit, she grabbed that information and distributed it to us and to others. And so, if you are aware of what happened last few days with the statewide schools or the nationwide school stores, and what Youngkin described as catastrophic drop, they have come out with a seven-point plan to increase, you know, the performance in academics. And it pretty much mirrors a lot of what the superintendent put into place months ago because I think she was monitoring that set of criteria, that is, that data-driven stuff early. So, I think she gets some credit here from listening to the new administration, where they were going. And it turns out that, I think, and this sounds a little self-serving for us, but I think that, did you listen to Cordero's webinar the other night? So, she had a seven-point plan, which sounds stunningly like what you've already done in the county.
I don't know that our superintendent needed a whole lot of guidance from her governor, but that's my...
Well, I mean, you know, when you're lining up with the Secretary of Education...
Ahead of time.
Then things are going the way they're supposed to be, you'll see. So, I think, sort of...
That's perfect.
Ms. Shepherd, about the science, when did we combine grades six, seven, and eight in the science? When did that start? Because when I taught back in the dinosaur era, we had science assessment every year.
When did we quit testing six and seven science?
I'd say it's been about eight years.
So, we've been on this system for eight years?
At least.
Okay.
Well, and it was a move away from SOL testing and trying to get it down to fewer tests that you had to have to graduate. So, we finally did that and got it from nine to five, but then now we've got all these growth assessments in the middle. So, which we need, but, you know, we're back to testing quite a bit.
What am I saying? It took him three years to pass it.
Excuse me, Mr. Morris. When I taught science, science was, and Dr. Heingartner, were you agreeing with this?
I agree.
Whatever he says.
I mean, science was usually the top of the list.
It was definitely...
And why?
Our science scores traditionally were very high in the SOL, absolutely. Yes, and science scores were all...
But now, students have got to remember SOL from six, seven, and eight, and that's not easy.
So, Mr. Pollock, I do want to say that it's a team effort. You know, if we didn't have teachers that, you know, hit the ground running, and we didn't have principals doing their job, and then the central office folk helping, you know, supporting them, it's impossible for any one person to do this. Definitely a team effort.
Melody, with the new adjustment that the school board, the school board had to do with the staff because of not being able to fill all your positions by increasing the class size, has that been an obstacle or a concern or complaint about the teachers trying to, is that an issue?
It is an issue, and I wish we could have, Ms. Heing, does we have, what, 22 positions still vacant?
We have 17.
Seventeen, yes. So, it is an obstacle, and, you know, we do have larger class sizes, and we do have teachers teaching an extra block, which is not ideal.
No, but I think that teachers deserve a lot of credit. We're picking up some slack.
Right. Our teachers are amazing.
And should be treated as such.
So, facilities, facilities update, just a little, you know, a little excerpt on facilities. Currently, we are accepting proposals for an architect, for professional services, for school facilities, and a needs assessment. So, we want to look at a needs assessment for the next many years so that we can plan accordingly. For example, we know that when we had the lockdown at Stralsburg High School and the sheriff's office and other people that were trying to respond, it was blocked because it was, you know, there's just one way in to that area and one way out. So, we know we have some needs, but what are some solutions? And we're not sure what those solutions are. At WW Robinson, every evening, afternoon, at pickup time, there's, and Sandy Hook as well, there's a huge traffic line, and, you know, so what are some solutions that we can have for that as well? So, with this facility's planning, hopefully, we will have multiple suggestions for solutions for those things and other things. We're looking for a term architect who, an engineering firm, that we have, we received $2.3 million from the state in this fiscal year to do school construction. And what we would like to do with that money is we would like to put secure front entrances at our elementary schools. So, we have secure front entrances at our middle and our high schools, but this money will be used for those secure front entrances where you have to buzz in and you have to go into a vestibule-type area before you can actually enter into the building. So, that's what the majority of this money is going to be used for, and we have to have an architectural firm to design that for us. And the money has to be spent by 2023, 24. So, there is, you know, there's an end to that money.
Is it going to be a short-term, midterm, long-term window?
So, the facilities plan is going to be a long-term window so that we can, you know, a 20-year term or a 20-year facilities plan. The work to our elementary schools, it's going to be short-term. It has to be done by 2024 because we don't want to forfeit that money when we know we have a need.
How about triplet tech, a short-term or long-term? As far as expanding the opportunities?
So, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. And then the capital improvement plan, so we had a, we changed up our process this year, and we had a team actually visit every single one of the schools to make a determination on what the needs were for each of our facilities. And Dr. Heingartner, and Ms. Stein, and Mr. Ord, and the school principal were all part of that tour of the facility so that we could come up with a pretty comprehensive improvement plan for all of our schools. Dr. Heingartner, Angie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think it's very eye-opening. Encourage all of you, if you get a chance, go by schools and put your eyes on the things because to hear about them, you can't really comprehend and say, we need X. They're saying they need X, they're really going to need it. But you understand what you said.
I think it's very important that once the study comes back, that, you know... I think it's very important that once the study comes back, that, um, you know, that the school board or we need to make a real effort to inform the general public what the needs are. Because you're right, you know, they don't know. And it's much better educating them and letting them from the very get-go that they, they can say, well, you know, I don't believe it will, we'll have proof at one time.
So grade reconfiguration at our southern campus. So our current configuration is Honey Run Elementary School's pre-K through four. North Fork Middle School is five through seven. Mountain View High School is grades eight through 12. And then Massanutton Regional Governor School, Governor School is located here at Triple Tech. So at the beginning of next year, we are going to reconfigure. Um, Honey Run Elementary School will be pre-K five. North Fork Middle School's going to be six through eight. Mountain View High School's going to be nine through 12. And then the Governor's School is going to relocate to Mountain, Mountain View High School. And that will allow some additional space for, um, courses here at Triple Tech.
And what is your pre-K? What is classified, what ages are pre-K?
Three, four, two, three, four, three, four.
Two.
Pre-K. Two, three, four.
Two-year-old? We have two-year-old kids in our school system.
Will there be more opportunity for, for numbers in the Governor's School? Or with us working with other counties, that's not possible?
Yep. So there are 81 students in Governor's School. And I think we can increase a couple of students, but not a significant number of students.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of kids in Governor's School, isn't it?
It's two grades, two grade levels.
It's still a lot of.
It is, but it's Hage, Rockingham, Harrisonburg, and Shenandoah.
So the whole school, not just Shenandoah County or Shenandoah?
That's why I have to be on the southern end.
And this is just a quick, um, the dark blue is, um, the enrollment from last year. The light blue, it will be the projected enrollment for '23, '24. And if you add the 81 students from Massnutton Regional Governor's School to Mountain View High School, it puts them about the same number they are at currently. So what does that mean for Triple Tech? It means, well, other information about Triple Tech. We were awarded a Claude Moore Charitable Foundation Grant, a little over 115,000. And we're doing a SIM Reg ambulance, and it also pays for some probotomy, um, credentially, I believe. And then we're also partnering with Shenandoah County Fire and Rescue to offer the firefighter program this year. So we do E M T one year and firefighter the next year. So this is the firefighter year. So wanted to make sure I highlighted that. But next year, for the 2023, '24 school year, some of the potential offerings that we're looking at is H VAC, P T O T A, and then reestablishing our Teachers for Tomorrow program. So the, the number of classrooms that we're going to free up next year for relocating Massnutton Regional Governor's School to Mountain View High School will be at least four. H VAC will take two of those spaces. O T P T will probably take one of those spaces. So we likely have one space left. We'll grow into that for '24, '25 school year, and then we'll be at capacity again.
P T O T for the unimportant physical therapy occupation.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Is that part of time overtime?
Physical therapy and, and occupational therapy.
Just be thankful she's not saying like B C B A and all those other special edge terms. Those ones are fair.
So how many, um, how many students do you think in the H VAC program? It's two slots, is that 40 kids?
Thirty to 40, 20 per class, or 40, yeah, 30.
Over two years. Now, how, how is Honey Run able to accommodate another grade next year?
So they were not at capacity. So they had some empty classrooms, and then we had the, um, community health clinic, thank you, there. And they're no longer operating there, so we had some space there as well. Then we're able to convert into all the space and then convert some other space into classrooms.
We don't have a whole lot of housing going in and catching the southern end of the county. Not, not like Woodstock or Stallosburg, you know, no housing-driven population.
Do you not pay attention at the supervisor meetings?
I mean, I'm not a lot.
Remember when they wanted to talk about their plan?
You mean down, down in the southeast, end of Newmarket? Now, we, we've already figured out what to do with our capacity, capacity issue, and I'm pleased.
So, Mr. Morris, you were asking about teachers. And, um, and this right here, the Teachers for Tomorrow program, that's a grower. That's, you know, kids who are interested in being teachers at, at the high school level. Then hopefully we can attract them to come back to Shenandoah County four years after, when they receive their degree, their college degree.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm really excited about that.
Love the question.
But that, that is kind of cool, isn't it? I was, they, the kids who are students are sort of incorporated into the teaching system, which is, you know, classically completely separated. And when kids leave here, they often don't know what their future is. Where they can actually plan to come back when they leave, right?
That's right.
Well, part of E and T, basically the same principle. Uh, they may or may not go to college, but do more grand while they're young, energetic, and unfocused.
Right. And I think that's why the partnership with Shenandoah County Fire and Rescue has worked so well.
Oh, I, I think that's a great idea.
Ms. Ms. Shepherd, going back to, uh, the Governor's School going to Mountain View, those students, what, is that 81?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that does not count as the enrollment at, at, uh, Mountain View.
So if you take the 412, or 512 students and add the 81, it would be close, it would be 583 students. And last year they had 500, is that lighting on?
Thank you. Margaret, what, what you're talking about is D H S L.
Yeah, Virginia High School, it doesn't count at all because it comes from other.
Yes, that's correct.
Nice try.
Well, no, we don't.
No, but I want to make that clear, it doesn't count.
No, it does not count. So that's the end of my formal presentation. Does anyone have questions or just want to kind of give you an update of where we were and where we were going? I know the school board has heard of us along the way, but it may be new information to our board supervisors.
First of all, thank you for taking questions during your presentation.
Oh, certainly.
So, I have some.
You can sing if you want.
Um, I have some takeaways, but what, so we have 17 openings for teachers. We've lost some teachers, I know. We, we need to do something about recruitment and retention. It's, it's not just Shenandoah County, it's shortages everywhere. Should we talk about that, what you need from supervisors to help address that? Our budget cycle is coming up.
I'm looking forward to it.
There's one.
I'm going to hand the microphone to Linda Hodges. I'm not really sure. We certainly want to increase our health insurance contribution for families. We've lost a lot of employees to surrounding counties who do provide more of a contribution towards the families. Uh, we want to continue to increase the salary for our teachers. Right now, we're, we're trying to hold it medium with where the surrounding counties are paying so we can be competitive.
Could I ask Linda a question?
Yes, but I want to add something to that. A couple of employees that had accepted positions, or a couple of candidates who accepted positions in Shenandoah County last year chose to pull back because of the customer health insurance when they found out that it was at least two, that I'm aware.
But it's, for a family, it's a dramatic difference of what they pay.
It is. It's like $1,122 for a family plan.
Do, do we have any prediction of, of whether we're going to get nailed with a big increase this coming year as we did last year?
We are expecting another large increase, but we don't know for sure yet. Plans are not in.
So how, how do we, how do we, how do we improve our numbers and get our, our employees healthier? And, you know, are there other programs we can implement along, along those lines?
Well, the, the governor's suggesting a fitness program.
U-R-A.
Including riding bicycles in the community.
Yeah.
But you can't stop pregnancies. You ride a bicycle long as you want, it'll.
No comment.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, um, Linda, you, you will mandate teachers for, they have to give an exit survey when they leave. That's correct. There's a lot of undercurrent about, um, student behavior in the classroom, in the hallways. I, I heard some, you know, some, some rural corporates, week after the fair, during the fair week. Is, is that a discouragement to the teachers and the staff? I mean, are they leaving because they are getting no respect or little respect from the students? Just how's that playing the thing? I'm kind of thinking that, you know, you go into a classroom, you don't get any respect, you know, and you get beat up all day. You go home, that sticks with you, you know? Uh, no matter how good a teacher you are, you know, it, it doesn't go away. I'm just thinking, I'm not saying it's a problem, I'm just asking, is that part of the issue?
It is part of the issue. It's not the primary reason that they give for leaving. It's usually part of the reason, it's a secondary reason. They're overwhelmed, that's the primary reason they're leaving.
Really?
It's because they're overwhelmed.
With, with.
They're overwhelmed, so we have some who are leaving education or they're choosing to stay home and parent their own children. Or they're leaving to take care of parents with health issues. They're leaving education.
And then there's lots of revoked employment out there too, isn't it?
Thank you.
Want to speak to that one? No, go ahead, go ahead. Hey, Dr. Heingartner.
I can't, I, I will tell you that, um, there is no question that student conduct and student behavior is, is something that is high on every administrator and every teacher's list of concerns. And, um, we've been, we've been meeting frequently. In fact, um, again, next, uh, week after next to go around and have individual meetings with administrators about student conduct. We've been trying to take one different approach. In fact, I was having a meeting yesterday about, um, attendance and how student conduct plays into attendance and what that looks like. And even from a state level, they're suggesting, you know, let's do more, think about doing more to engage parents in this conversation. And so honestly, that's music to our ears because that's something that we've been talking about trying to, um, do more of. And I think 10, 15, 20 years ago, things could be handled at the school and, and it would improve. It would get better. It's, it's a challenge right now, there's, there's no doubt about it. We probably didn't have to engage parents as much 15 or 20 years ago. Because just, I don't want to say threat, but just the knowledge that mom or dad might be involved was enough to curb things. Not so much the case right now. So that's one approach that we're trying to look at, to how can we engage parents to be involved in helping this, this situation? There's, there's no sense in scurrying around it. It's, it's something we're dealing with every single Saturday day.
Would that be something a, a individual teacher would have to do to contact the parents? Would it be, uh, the, the school administrator, I mean, school principal? Where would that start?
Yep, and that's a good question. And in a perfect world, it starts with the teacher. We're just, we're just meeting with aspiring administrators today. And anytime a problem can be handled at the lowest level, it's probably the best, um, solution because that's who knows the student the best. And so in a perfect world, yes, we do ask parents, you know, reach out, talk to, I mean, we ask teachers to reach out and talk to parents. But when that's not being effective and that's not getting the job done, then obviously it's a, it's an administrator responsibility. The student support specialists that have been, um, involved now for a couple of years have been huge in helping with this. Again, today in our aspiring administrators workshop, we had a billion principals that were there. And a few of them talked about the importance of, of the student support specialists and how that person's been able to kind of bridge the gap between parents' needs at home and, you know, and the needs we have at school. So it's been a helpful thing, but, you know, it's, it's a challenge, that's, that's the reality, it's a challenge.
Is there any press here tonight, is it? Is the press here? What's that?
You're live, Dennis.
You're live?
You're going out to the world.
We'll just keep it that way, that's fine. But thank you very much.
You're welcome, Dennis.
I'm going to add a little to that conversation.
Linda and I attended a meeting with Mid Valley Exortium, which there's about, I believe, eight divisions that participate. And it's about recruiting teachers and providing mentorships for them so that they have positive experiences. The behavior issue is not localized, just us. They all discuss how in their divisions they see behaviors. The students are being placed, they see those behaviors in their placements also. So it's not just within Shenandoah, behaviors are happening everywhere. That's a little bit different right now. The other thing that they brought up too, and recruitment, I think it was Waynesboro, that they, they have very few vacancies because they raised, they did a significant raise in their salaries. So that was one thing that we spoke about.
I don't want to take away from, um, the education and the discipline and things like that because that is obviously the most important. However, I am the money girl. And Mr. Rolston did ask a question about what we might need from the board of supervisors. And I wanted to just back up a little bit to health insurance. As Linda alluded to, it is a big issue. And last year, we, we did make small strides. We scratched the surface. But in doing that, um, you know, we played around with, with different scenarios and things like that. But in doing that, we also got rid of a plan. And our Cadillac plan now is a thousand-dollar deductible, um, straight up right from the start. So not only are they paying these major high premiums, but they're paying a hundred, a thousand-dollar deductible right from the start. So we need to look at the whole picture again, and, um, our team will definitely be doing that this year.
How are you on school bus drivers?
I'm working on that now, too. We are doing really, really well on, um, on bus drivers. I believe we are at like six vacancies in, in, in bus drivers right now, um, which is very good. And, um, we actually just had, um, a little celebration for them, um, breakfast last week.
Where, where you getting by?
There was no meal.
Okay. If you say so, but anyways, um, no. Uh, we did, and we had very good turnout. They were very appreciative. I attended one at Stallosburg High School, and afterwards, I actually got an email from someone else thanking, thanking us for coming and recognizing them. So, um, they are feeling appreciated as well.
Dennis, I will, uh, speak to a little bit of bus drivers. Uh, the interim superintendent at Frederick County, um, I, I talked to him, and one of his first concerns was the head of transportation in Frederick County. And she was alerted to him that. And she was alerted to him that we raise our rates here, and they said, with the bus drivers, we leave in our county if we don't match Shenandoah County. So with Ms. Shepherd, that, that scale was a disgrace.
Oh, I know.
Thirty-year year increase, only fifteen hundred dollars. So with leadership plays a lot. And, and so anyway, but also, we hear about the negative in the classroom, discipline. Where I was fortunate, Andrew was fortunate, we went to a elementary class in Seguinaw, third grade. And it had twenty-some, I didn't know third graders were that small anymore. But they were perfect. And I read a book that you would love.
What would, what would name of?
It was When the Farmers Quit, The Day the Farmers Quit. Anyway, you can, maybe, uh, you put it on your Santa list, uh, maybe you'll get a copy.
All right.
Let's talk, let's talk.
I know there's more questions, but I do appreciate the presentation and the discussion. But, I mean, takeaways are that our ranks are improved. Shelsy says this, and I frequently echo this same thought, that, you know, attitude reflects leadership. What you've got is a high-performing team. And I know you're not going to take any credit for it, but it, it starts from the top. And empowering your people, which isn't just afraid, it's actually letting them do their jobs. Uh, that, that manifests itself down the line, and everybody else following sees that, and it has impact. You're getting teachers to step in to, you know, Mr. Pollack had pointed out, you, you, you were ahead of the game in your seven-point plan because you knew that needed to happen. I, I mean, I think you're, you're precisely the shot in the arm that Shenandoah County needed in our school system. And you're not going to take credit for it, so all of you are the shot in the arm that we needed here. My takeaway isn't, yep, I, I see we've got some improvement we need to make. But the good news is you know where that is, and you already got processes in place to address that. And we have seen improvement. So we're not just sitting around crossing our fingers for something good to happen. We're, we're putting things in place and implementing and moving to succeed. So, uh, those are my takeaways from tonight. I, I appreciate it, and I, you know, that's, that's one of the two supervisors we still have kids in the school system.
I appreciate it greatly.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Then hand him the mic, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments here. We, we talked about the, uh, the health, uh, care system being, uh, pretty costly. Is there any way that we could do it on a regional base with other, other schools or something to, uh, maybe minimize, uh, uh, the, the, the cost increases? That, there's always the, uh, the power of numbers.
So my terminology's not going to be correct, so I expect to be, um, corrected. Uh, but we're going to go back out to the marketplace this year to see if we can get a better rate. Is that right?
Right.
Very good.
Maybe Mr. Bass can answer this. Is there any way that, or, or Ms. Bellier, that the, the school system in the county be on the same, the same thing years ago? I believe it was with, uh...
So, Mr. Baker, I want to answer that question.
Great, I'm really, she's great.
I'm sorry about that.
Our, no, no, because I don't want him to have to answer for our negativity. Um, our, um, claim rate is really high, our utilization rate is really high, and the county doesn't want to, um, to...
Jump on board.
Yeah, jump on board with that.
I don't think it's solely that, I think it's a different, it's a different type of pool of employees. There is just, it's enough difference that, that you see them combined some, but not all the time.
And getting our, our employees healthy would be a very, because the claims, the claims are high, and they're, they're not, um, I don't know how many pregnancies we got going on, however, you know, there's...
Or it was connected to bicycling.
However, they're, they're expensive claims, from my understanding, correct? They're not, they're not just, you know...
So when you look at the top, it's at thirty-four, there's multiple cancers in there, there's multiple COVID-related illnesses in there, there's multiple digestive-type things in there.
Stress-related.
Yeah, so, um, it, it really is the, the top thirty-four. And you're looking at claims of over a half a million dollars on some of them. Yeah, we, we have insurance for that reason. We don't want to discourage people from using it either.
And I had asked about, like, um, you know, whether we should be offering free memberships to the gym, whatever, you know, something to, to supplement, those things to get people moving and healthy. Uh, what can you do?
So, to that issue, what Marty mentioned earlier, it's kind of exciting that, that the Yonkin administration has come up with this physical award system uh, that will, uh, has a tier of like gold, diamond, platinum achievement for putting in X number of minutes at, at certain kind of exercises. It's going to take some management, but the good news is basically it didn't cost anything. So, uh, this to me is a win-win because, uh, we all know when we've lost that weight, when we finish the obstacle course, whatever, we feel better, we look better, we, we present others, there's more energy, and there's that sense of attainment. And so I think that, you know, they, I mean, talk about holding the tooth, but I mean, this is what kind of the Kennedy thing was all about, you know, with the, uh, with the, uh, fitness for, for, it's, it's schools. And it, it doesn't cost anything, and it has, it has a great benefit. The, um, I mentioned, uh, the Secretary of Education, because, only because I want to talk about synergies between the boards here. Um, there's, there's an indication, uh, that, that the Yonkin administration is looking at clever, new, innovative ways to find and, um, develop teachers from other businesses, from other higher education roles. And this could be one of those things where the board of supervisors and the school board could actually work together at finding these areas. And it sounds to me like, like they, that is the, the administration in Richmond, is looking for ways to implement those kind of things. So when we as a board come up with something like that, I think we would find quick buy-in from Richmond, which could be bucks as well as, um, you know, moral support. Uh, so I, I know that's one thing in their, in their seven, seven-point, point plan. I, I think that is, is a good, as I say, synergy between the two boards, talk about that kind of thing, where, you know, we're not just coming to you for, for dollars, but for concepts of how we can integrate with businesses in other areas to get... Let's face it, we're, we're dealing with technological subjects these days that might be just sitting in some of these industries where somebody could come in and teach for certain blocks. But, but be that as a way, maybe, uh, we can, we can identify, I think, I think, um, people together. And also, they are talking about making more money available. Uh, and so, uh, if we're smart, we won't just come to you asking for the money. We'll be saying, there's a program in Richmond that we can use if you kind of buy in with it. So I think this is a good time in history for us as boards to be watching what's happening in Richmond, to see what tie-ins there are for us.
My colleagues, anything, anything else? Okay, I...
I just got one more comment here. Uh, we talked about the challenges, uh, with, I guess, with better behavior. I got to this with, uh, you know, a fair amount of teachers, uh, you know, in the past couple of months. And it is very challenging right now after COVID. Because these kids have been out for however long it was, and a lot of them are behind, and a lot of them are struggling. And the teachers are doing a wonderful job. I commend them for, for what, what they do. Not only are they a teacher, a lot of times is they're a counselor, a mentor, and possibly a parent. Uh, well, really puts us a forefront. In the past couple of weeks, I have had classes, uh, from, uh, a couple other counties come, and, uh, for a field day. And I talk to these teachers and says, these, these kids are just overwhelmed to have the opportunity to go out and visit or something. I'm not trying to put myself up, that's the last thing I would do. But if there's one thing that if we can do something for these kids, to get them out there, to, uh, have a good day for them, have a good day. But it, it's sad, some of the stories that I had heard, and I don't think the general public knows that, uh, of, of just, uh, how long, uh, it's going to take to overcome, you know, the, the past couple of years. So we all got to just work together and, uh, make it better as we move forward. But I know it's a, it's a tremendous amount of challenges, uh, with, with some of these young ones, because a lot of times it's, uh, they don't have a room at home, I can say it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to piggyback on exactly what, what Steve said. And, and it's, it's not just, um, you know, we're, we're all o, out here to help, but we, we really are. And, and this is one big team, and, and the fact that I assume that Marty enjoyed, uh, in reading to these kids, I think that in seeing, you know, the entire, you know, at least the county government is, is on your team and not a completely separate entity. Because, you know, one of the best synergies that goes on in the schools is, for instance, the student, the, the resource officers, okay? I mean, they're a tremendous resource, they're a tremendous source of, of leadership and, uh, and stability and strength and authority in, in our schools. And to the extent that, you know, we can bring more uniform officers in, whether they're law enforcement, whether they're, you know, uh, fire and rescue. And I, I know it's not easy to incorporate other people, but I think what you've got to know is that if you can figure out how to do it, you're going to have endless volunteers to, to come in and, and help out. And, and maybe it's nothing more than saying, you know, we've got some disorder in the hallways. You know, we, we, we need some help from some people in uniform, whether they're deputies or whether they're fire and rescue. You know, you should say, hey, guys, how about coming and walk, walk in our hallways, uh, you know, th, th, these times of the day? And, and that kind of, I think synergy helps, particularly if, if, if Marty can inspire order.
It was order before I walked in.
Well, good, but I, what I'm just saying is that I think, I think a lot of people are, are here to, to help. And I think that, um, when even kids see somebody new in authority, it's not just the same person that, that they may not have the greatest respect for, and then they see these people showing respect for the fine teachers out there, I think the synergy is, 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 is great. And as far as our seventeen vacancies, I think Colonel Barlow makes a great point. In other words, if, if those, if, if you all think that those seventeen vacancies could be filled with certain specialists that already exist in our area or in our county, but it's somehow being held back by state laws or state regulations. I mean, we, we have a better opportunity now than, than ever to overcome that. Because, you know, we've got a particularly friendly, uh, governor. Uh, we've got the Speaker of the House that represents us. So this notion of, of getting help from Richmond is very real, because it's not much more than just ask and tell. And Todd can actually, you know, help change the law on things that we think are important. And that could end up helping the whole state, but whatever it may be, it can help, it can help us. So, um, so, in other words, any thoughts or dreams that anybody has, um, should, should, should not stay in their heads. It needs to be discussed and, and gotten up to the Speaker, because he can, he can make changes real quick.
So talking about thoughts and dreams. In honor of Shenandoah County's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary.
Let's have a song.
Thank you. So Steve, talking about, where you were talking about taking opportunities for students within our own county to do things. With the two, uh, two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, we created a curriculum in fifth grade where we have an opportunity that we're not given an S O L test, that we're learning about Shenandoah County. So the kids can take trips within our county, can learn about our county, um, have guest speakers come in. Tim and Jessica have been the I T R C's, have done a great job of writing the curriculum. After we wrote the standards that are based off Virginia history standards in fourth grade, so it ties to something that they know, but really gets down into the depths of our county, so our kids can learn about our county. So that's an opportunity that we're taking in fifth grade, so that our students can learn about our own county and get out, go visit places and have experiences that they may not have before. We tied the fair to that this year, to make sure that kids go there, and Jennifer gave a survey, and there's a lot of students that's never been to the fair. It was twenty-five percent, it was their first time that they went to the fair. That was one, that was polled, not all of them were polled, we know that. But of the ones that we have, we know that twenty-five percent of the students had their first opportunity to go to the fair and experience the fair and see the agriculture, see the cattle and sheep. So those are the positive things that we're trying to do within the school system also.
And, and we really have a lot of community support, um, developing that curriculum and developing those film tricks and virtual film tricks and all of that. So it was, it was a fantastic opportunity, and that was actually Ted's dream from two years ago, three years ago?
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
You didn't mention the whole, the, the fair and the huge crowd over here. Hey, on behalf of Carl and Evan and myself, I want to thank, um, Marty and Dennis and Melly. We had a meeting there about three weeks ago called the Great Productive Meeting. And, uh, we need to do that more often. And also too, I want to commend the school board staff, as well as the school board, for, um, setting up the, uh, the Fun Day at Central High School.
Showcase.
Yes, I think it was, for a lot of credit, it was very successful, I was fully impressed. I think the other thing we need to do to bring the community involved, so thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-seven, or thereabouts. Hey, you got it.
You guys are still on the clock, great. I can adjourn the board of supervisors meeting.